Call this meeting to order. All rise for the flag salute.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Debbie Bailey, board member.
Stephanie Smith, board member.
Bernadette Bauer, board member.
Ryan Cristelli, board member.
Delaney Hanson, student representative.
Chris Nessman, superintendent.
Katie Houston.
Wendy Bellinstaff.
Lisa Arnoldstaff.
Carolyn Carrollstaff.
A.D. Walkerstaff.
Eric Smithstaff.
Kristy Kershawstaff.
Can I get the approval of board meeting minutes for October 25th of 2022?
I'll move the approval of board meeting minutes for October 25th, 2022.
I'll second it.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, consent agenda.
I'll move for the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Can I request a, I didn't notice this, we're in the other spot, I was out with a little lost today. As we have a motion to amend the board agenda, as the president's report presentation to under item, remove communication and comment letter F to discussion items letter K.
I make a motion that we move the CTE Perkins' report from the communication and comments to item A under the discussion items.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we will then go to the CTE Perkins' report from Kristy Kershaw.
So I handed out to you our strategic plan, a written document for your reference for a lot of the materials that I will be seeking later on in the board agenda, but this is an overview of the presentation that kind of gleams, gleams that strategic plan in general. Our Elma CTE vision is for all students to be prepared for an in-depth career that supports them with a livable family wage. And my analogy with this is that we're growing the CTE orchard. You can see here, there's a plot of land that has a variety of different crops, of orchards, trees started at various times. To me, this represents the land is our school district and our school, and then the trees, you'll see different programs that are at different starting points, growing points. And in order for those programs to really fully operate just as the trees, you gotta have quality people that is gonna man them, manicure them, put time and investment into them. You also have to have a school and a community that's gonna support them, respect and appreciate them. And that's what we have here at Elma that I'm really proud to say this is our orchard. And I get to be proud director of this garden and present to you our Elma CTE strategic plan that we have. Our vision is that to transform students into self-reliant adults for providing them with opportunities to explore, develop and implement strategies for lifelong learning. Elma CTE will provide value-added experiences in leadership, civic engagement, work-based learning, career preparation and 21st century skill development through industry-relevant curriculum, dual credit options and industry-recognized certifications. Extended resume building opportunities will be facilitated through FFA Skills USA and FBLA. This year, I'm pursuing approximately $225 in grants. Primarily, you'll see there, our Carl Perkins grant is the regular one that we have every year for federal compliance. We use that grant to provide professional development for our staff, also pay for industry-recognized certifications for our students so that they can have certificates that can be put on their resume and launch them into the platform for our industry, along with any of our high school beyond planning and things like that. We also do a lot of work with providing summer internship stipends through Elma Ag Boosters, Equus. We also use Greater Grace Harbor for national CTSO travel, along with Wilco for some construction co-op that we're looking to propose new this year. We also just submitted for our middle school ag co-op program for a STEM light house award and recognition grant. Hopefully, we get that. I also added there, you'll see a high-demand grant in Core Plus Aerospace Consumables and Ventilation. For really, that's the biggest part of our grants because our current ag mac fabrication manufacturing lab has a very old ventilation system. Figuring it was back in the late 50s when that area was built, it was not updated when the new high school was, was, you know, when our high school was implemented. And so we're looking at to try to get grants in order to offset that. Really, if we get that, we pretty much have our hygiene for that shop area in better shape because we got a dust collector a couple of years ago with a construction lab. We enhanced the air quality within system with our other aircraft manufacturing lab. Those are all expensive things, but they're not very sexy, so it's kind of hard to write a grant for that, but we're hoping for it. And then last year, we were able to secure over $370,000 in grants. The biggest part of that was we've been after the Esser grant that the state provided for Allied Health Career Pathway. We got that last spring with the intent, my understanding was that we would have two years to spend that. That got pulled back on us just because of all the different federal demands and state demands, but we will now have until June 30th of this coming year to, on 2023, to spend that. Right now, we're supporting two salaries to grow the Allied Health Careers Pathway, but also we're gonna be looking at adding equipment for implementing our fire science program that we want to put in next year, and then also equipment, medical equipment for our allied health careers. When I say allied health too, just so you know, it's going in veterinary sciences, medical sciences, and we're really putting fire sciences and that in there because it's really just the health, well-being of our, of our community. So that's kind of a big deal. Over the past seven years, we've been able to secure $858,000 in additional funds, and you'll see there that those are the different types of things that we've been able to buy and do. And we're very proud of that, that we continue to grow our programs and stay in, abreast with our industry-recognized equipment, along with making sure that we have quality classrooms, furniture, vehicles in order for our students to have an engaging opportunity. One of the amazing programs that we also have here at Elma is that Mary Roberts oversees our career-connected learning through our Eagles at Work. Here's our results for this last year. And actually, I guess I should say 2021, 22 results, sorry. But we've had almost 265,000 in work-based learning placement of dollars earned by our students, which recorded almost 20,000 hours. We had 44 CTE students, eight ALD students, seven IEP transition students and 19 worksite students that used the Early Bird Cafe for some of their experience. We also, this year, started our youth manufacturing apprenticeship program, which is, we'll talk a little bit later, but that's a pretty amazing opportunity. We got to re-engage our job fair, and we had 28 vendors. We had the gym completely full of vendors and over 100-plus students that got a chance to do that. And then we also had different CTE students that competed in job interview events. Another huge success that we're very proud of is our school garden and our different opportunities for students to work through agriculture. But we have, we continue to do the school garden in the summertime where we have earned money through Equus and Pack Mountain, along with Ag Boosters has been instrumental with collecting different industry dollars from like Port Blakely, Summit Pacific Medical Center, Sound Pumping. We have a lot of different industry partners that have helped us there, and we collected almost $30,000 that we paid 23 teens ages 14 on up to work at least a 45 to 60-hour internship at minimum wage. And then 13 of those teens also decided to market rabbits in our, at the Grace Harbor County Fair through our agriculture co-op, our Rabbit Enterprise, and then they earned extra money above and beyond that and learned how to market and produce and things like that. And then we were really, really grateful to have two former Elma grads that actually helped start this program that are currently going to WSU, hired during the summertime to take on supervisory roles. And one of them was Michael Martinez and the other one Colton Morgan. And we're really excited because Michael Martinez is able to use this experience to apply for his agriculture education credential that he's currently pursuing at WSU. And then you'll see also, we have our FFA program, which is supervised agriculture experiences. We have a lot of students that are doing entrepreneurship projects, exploratory projects, our cooperative school enterprises projects such as our greenhouse, Eagle Industries, FFA Improvement, all of that or working for somebody, and so those students also earn quite a bit of money through all these different experiences. The other thing that we are really proud of is that we also have dual credit opportunities. We've actually increased, last year, we were at 88 different college credits for our CTE students. Now we're up to 125 with 32 different Elma School District courses. Roughly, if you say that the college credit is worth $100, which is a little more, but you're looking at a $10,000 value for our students. Also, we also have some extended opportunities where we have an agreement MOU with Perry Technical Institute that they can earn a $1,000 scholarship to advance into Perry Technical Institute if they've been in our manufacturing and construction and fabrication program. We also have an MOU with our carpenters union that gives them preferential placement, involvement. And then the one that we're, we're really excited about is our AJAC MOU where we have our students, one of the parents right here today is, we have five students placed in three different industries with Vaughn Company and our aviation and Sierra Pacific. And these five teenagers are working four hours a day. They started this summer. They're gonna complete a 2,000-hour youth apprenticeship journeyman credential through automation technician. And then they're also gonna earn 15 college credits and come out with some different other certificates and graduate. Other industry certificates that we have, we have a variety of things. You'll see the food handlers permit, first aid CPR bronze, steel bronze, Core Plus, which is part of our apprenticeship program, OSHA 10 is part of our apprenticeship program in advanced manufacturing. Forklift operator, we have all of our students that are in our shop labs, go through forklift training. And then we have standard precision exams that can be applied to some of our different programs. We also really work hard on having CTE graduation readiness pathways. This is part of the House Bill 1599 where you have students' options to graduate by having a CTE graduation pathway completed. And what this simply means is that they're completing two years of a sequence of CTE courses that leads to either an industry-recognized certification and/or a dual credit opportunity at a community or technical college. And we've worked really hard to create 21 options in all five of our programs. We just recently added one for STEM, which would be forensic science with Ms. Nelson. Some of our, I'm just gonna say, we're gonna brag a little bit here, president's success. It's a rare, I know, I've been in this business for 35 years, let alone to have one of these successes, but to have two of them in the same year is pretty amazing. But we have our national, here's Grace Smith, National Officer Candidate on stage in June, but later on in July, she was named the president of the National Skills USA Association. So she serves as a president this year nationally. And then we also have Sam Gillis, that is serving as our state FFA president. So for both, this is the first time for us to even have each, any of those, and then to have them in the same year, pretty, pretty exciting and pretty special. Other CTSO successes, we were able to go to Nationals for Skills USA in Atlanta, Georgia. We also went to Nationals for FFA in Indianapolis, Indiana. Both, all three organizations, FBLA, FFA and Skills USA did state competitions. And we had, you know, and we were all in person. We did hybrid things, but we also were in person. Our state FFA group, half of that group that you see down there in the blue coats, half of them are middle schoolers. And that was the biggest group of middle school students that we, that we were able to take, and it was very exciting. We had some good community support and some good cooks to help us out with this because it was in tri cities this year. The other pretty amazing opportunity that we started this year was apprenticeships. Here's some of our students that are at signing day and then just learning the skills either at the school or on the job training through their apprenticeship program. Our goal next year is to actually double that. We're hoping to have 10 students placed and if we can, to have six different industries going, and our current three industries are excited to support it, to continue to support it and potentially have others, and then also make sure, hoping to recruit other industries to also do this. Another cool thing that we've done too is connections. We started some career pathway workshops after school, some medical programs. We worked with WSU School of Medicine, U Dub's Medicine, some former graduates came in and worked with our students. We've also worked with Chief Schultz, Kim Foster, and then the different companies such as Vaughn Company and different things. But what's happening is, is now we're really more so engaging our community and our industry partners. They're coming on campus, but then the next step is we're gonna actually be taking students to those different campuses so that they can see some of these programs in action. So our accomplishments, you'll see there, this is that school garden that Ms. Bender's been working on. Mr. Fenfrock was instrumental in the landscaping and that crew of students putting that together. And you'll see the mural in the background, but this is a new outdoor classroom that we have connected to the middle school. And the cool thing too, we've even had some of our, our middle school football. They had a team dinner out there and stuff like that, so it's just, we're really excited to see the opportunities for that. You'll also notice that the greenhouse is there. We have some new storage sheds down there. That's to cover some of our different equipments such as our tractor, gator, things like that. Also, we're recovering the greenhouses. That's been a quite, quite a process, but we're hoping to get it all buttoned up by, before the end of this year, before the end of this calendar year, so that we can get the greenhouse going again. We also purchased a Ford transporter and XL so that we had more cargo room, more interactive TVs and projectors. For the most part, most of our classrooms are pretty outfitted. And then we have our outdoor classroom welding simulator, multi-purpose, excuse me, multi-process welding machines. And then our STEM labs. We were able to get the portables there at the middle school. Ms. Fielding and Ms. Bender now have redone those classrooms into STEM labs and really done some engaging furniture and stuff like that. That's really cool to see if you get a chance. The other thing that we've been able to do is just more hybrid and in-person leadership events. Which we're finding is, I don't think it's gonna go away, which is a good thing, like job interview. We're gonna have parts of our contests that are gonna be Zoom because that is the future of how we're gonna do things. Job fair, we're able to bring back online plant cell, and we will probably continue that just because of, you know, just biosecurity and different things that we're dealing with and personnel. Our Portrait of an Elma Eagle was pretty extensive this last year, and we'll continue to move that forward, our apprenticeship program. We're continuing to develop. We've implemented the middle school health and fitness program under CTE. Our manufacturing labs are almost complete. Once we get ventilation fixed, got financial support with a lot of our work experience and internships, growth in our summer ag co-op. Forensic science is on board now. Allied Health Career Pathways on board. We're in process with fire science. And we now also have applied math programs at the high school with Mr. Aiken, Ms. Ridout and Mr. Fenfrock. So really excited about the opportunities there. Our goals are to continue all that stuff, continue with our STEM graduation pathway, transition construction and fabrication with Core Plus. Continue to try to figure out how we can put in Native American history studies with CTE and STEM at the middle school and high school. Continue our medical careers and try to keep pushing forward for a CNA program that is a labor of love, let me tell you. Apprenticeships, we're working towards apprenticeships and education, internships for our juniors and seniors. Ultimately, we would love to have every junior, senior at one time during their high school career, complete a 30-hour internship. College and high school for a CTE math option. Input our fire science and then eventually an EMT program. Allied Health Science Careers School Data System fully implemented with our high school and beyond plan and our college and career readiness data by assessing that, a middle school Core Plus Engineering shop and CTE STEM Science in the seventh grade. And then bring back some of our high school engineering options and graphic production. Equipment that we're planning on is, again, like I said before, is the ventilation greenhouse and smart boards and classroom furniture. We want to continue to engage in redefining ready in all of our career and college readiness, marketing, promotion, state and national level, continue the, the good work that our people are doing because it is people who build programs. Continue our programs, continue supporting our amazing staff, implement career connections through our Portrait of an Elma Eagle. And then we would like to introduce possibly a CTE senior award to recognize some of the CTE graduation pathways and the big accomplishments that seniors are doing for graduation. With that, we always have, I have a QR code that if you would like to go on a Google form, if you have notices and wonderings, we're always looking for advice input. What can we do better? What are we doing well? And then, of course, if you want to come and tour, we'd love to take you on a tour and showcase all the different things that we have going on. And with that, I thank you for your time, and if you have any questions on the strategic plan that's in front of you, that is part of our car Perkins compliance with all of our, you know, dual credits, IRCs, graduation pathways and our goals and successes. Work in progress. So there's the orchard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any questions. As always, you know, this is just an absolutely incredible job, pathways and the direction, and just knowing that we're kind of paved on framing out these career pathways, so good job. Like I said, I always appreciate your work.
Great.
Yeah, that's a lot. Thank you again.
Okay. Okay, I can't, I can't get this out of here. Okay. Communications and comments. Do you have anybody from ETO? EESP? ECPA? Admin? Persons to be heard? We didn't have anybody send an email. Okay, we moved that one up. So we will move into new business. Approval to levy refunds and cancellation.
Yeah, we have a we have a levy refund amount in the amount of $12,961.51. And it's just a difference between what was collected and what was ran our levy out. The state does give us, does give us the ability to go back out and ask for due theft, but the cost to run about measure with costs more than $12,000. And it makes more sense to just refund the money in the best interest of report building of our community. Is there anything else that we should add on that topic?
No, so I say we don't go out to the taxpayers for $13,000, especially when we're gonna be putting on, but we don't, we're on ballot.
So we just need action to certify, we need action item, Elma School District 68 hereby certify so refund the levy and its MNO fund with a collection of 2023 at the amount of $12,961.51 to recover the net refund cancellation. And we're just seeking board action on that.
So you guys can note not to collect it.
I make a motion that Elma School District 68 does not wish to re-levy any of its MNO fund refunds or cancellations during the 2023 tax year.
I'll second that.
It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of whoop. I'm gonna read it off of here. Approval of the 06-2223 Resolution for Moving Banking Accounts to First Security Bank.
So we want to move our bank accounts from Amquai in Montezano back to town. It's gonna save us money and Amquai's fees went from zero to six to $800 a month on our accounts. An example is payroll. We put it in, it comes out the next day. It's $160 a month now to do that. Our security fees are about 25% of what Amquai was. So we would like, and the girls don't have to drive the money anymore, so they can make right here in town. And I think it's safer. So I love your approval for security.
I'll move the approval of 06-2223 Resolutions for Moving Banking Accounts to First Security Bank.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded. I'm not gonna ask myself if there's any discussion, so, because that's weird. I do have a question. Was the choice to go to First Security made based upon what that bank can offer in our town as opposed to any other bank in town? Are they the most competitive or the best?
We can only bank with certain banks being a school district.
Right.
The credit union did not get certified for us to be able to bring it there. That was something they were working on.
Okay.
But never got completed.
Okay.
And so I wanted to get them switched to town.
I can appreciate that. Thank you.
So I just moved forward.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval to VIBA Trust District Office.
This is an every-year resolution, and this just needs board approval. This is what the group chose.
I'm moving for approval of VIBA Trust District Office.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is that a yes, Stephanie?
Yes, sorry, I hit a traffic spot. That was rough. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Opposed? Motion carries. I just wanted it for the record. Approval of VIBA MOU Elma Educational Support Professionals.
Same thing. This is what they voted on.
I'll move for the approval of VIBA MOU Elma Educational Support Professionals.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We did already did the CTE plan, right?
We need
No, we did not. Okay.
We need approval.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna do the approval of the 2022-2026 Elma CTE Strategic Plan.
Do you need special language in the motion for your purpose?
Because I mean, the strategic plan outlines how you're spending Perkins' dollars. According to the Perkins grant, we have to have it approved by the board itself.
So do you need the language to say that we would approve it in addition to the Carl Perkins grant?
Sure.
Okay. Can someone so move?
I move for the approval of 2022-2026 Elma CTE Strategic Plan to include the Carl Perkins Grant.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the Elma Performing Arts Booster Fundraiser 2023 and tonight we have Katie Hughes. Yes?
Yes.
Can't see.
So I'm back again. I'm trying to get all on one and I apologize. So you might see me one more time. So this one is for approval at our concert center. Same as my last time. This time we have the donation of a wooden swing that is being made for us by a local crafter. So we would like permission to sell tickets for that. We also want to do sessions of these things, i.e. cookies and water, just our performances. So the band choir and drama. I think there was, I came completely unprepared from parenting conferences, so I apologize. Oh, or 50/50 raffle. We would also like to be able to host, and I think that was. Yeah, this is our vice president. Sorry.
Are we open for discussion?
Open for discussion.
In regards to your raffles, are you aware of the gambling laws?
I am not personally.
Okay, so you can only have two raffles per year.
Okay.
And you cannot profit more than $5,000 in a raffle.
I don't think so.
So, okay. Your swing here, I don't know.
Swing is nice.
But also with that, you have to make sure that you keep track of all of your sales. You have to keep your tickets for over a year. Your sold tickets for operating purposes, yeah. And then your 50/50, you could only have two in a year.
Is that a county or a school year?
That's a good question. I would I would say probably a school year. And all of that information is on the state website, gambling commission. And I can tell exactly where it is, but I know it's there.
Is there? Okay.
So I would just say to caution you to reference that and make sure that you're within those guidelines where you start these.
Thank you.
I'll move for the approval of Elma Performing Arts Booster Fundraisers 2022-23.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Best of luck. Okay, approval to increase ticket prices for winter sports.
Ron is trolling right now, so I hope I cover this. And in compliance with our league and district agreement, the district is seeking to increase our our winter sports admissions from $5 for general admission to $7 and $3 for seniors to $5. And this is just to match what we agreed to that all the districts in the league and the district would have the same price. So we're seeking action on. The increases.
And then also on the season passes for people to purchase, there has been no change on those.
We, you know, currently there's not seeking a price change in that. The big one is, and I don't think that's reflective within our district league agreement. This one is what we're looking for, just so we're compliant with the rest of the district.
Is there, help me remember, is there help for families that are not able to purchase?
Under 1660, there's requirements to have help. So families can actually acknowledge under the registration. As far as when they register if they need help.
When they register.
I move for the approval to increase ticket prices for winter sports.
I'll second that.
It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. They can't do that noise anymore. Nails on a chalkboard. Approval on updating the compliance of WIA coaches. School.
So we are currently, we are doing a restructure in a follow up of our athletics or activities program. And this includes the three years required training. Through the WIA, the bulk of that training, medical aspects of coaching, legal aspects of coaching, psycho social foundations, coaching, diversity, equity, inclusion trainings are offered through the summer. Knowing that we need to get our athletic programs into compliance and under the guidance of the WIA and our risk management pool, we're seeking board approval. To run a five o'clock hour training under a sports nutrition, hydration, implicit bias, social media, suicide prevention, bullying and ACL injury prevention. And with more as they become approved by the WAA through the NFHS option for remote certification. And the WAA does give the Elma School District the ability for us to approve this training in lieu of the the package WIA training. So we're seeking approval to run the NFHS coaching fundamental courses to get our coaches into compliance with the required training.
I take I take it those are online courses?
Yes, they're online.
I have a question, just so I'm clarifying. You said in lieu of. Are we going to be covering A through D? In addition to, but your or the proposal is to do these other things.
The proposal is that these these courses, the WIA has recommended that we can use these courses in place of the other courses. For now, for the coaches that we need to get recertified now for the immediate issue. And then we'll be moving back to these courses above listed above under the 20.5.7 WIA compliance moving forward in the future.
Okay, I don't want to see those ones go away and not be utilized. I understand where you're coming from.
We're not proposing a permanent replacement. We're proposing a, we have coaches, we need to get certified right now in the short term. And we're proposing a replacement so we can get the certification stuff.
Okay.
So we are seeking approval of using the NFHS coaches. We're seeking approval of using the NFHS learn classes for coach certification.
I make a motion for the approval on updating the compliance of the WIA coaches school.
I'll second that.
Then a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I have just one question. To do the NFHS program, is there a cost involved?
Yeah, I mean, I I will have to follow up with Ron. Ron did not include the class involved, but I think there's a class involved regardless. Whether we're doing the WIA course or whether we're doing the other course. So regardless of which one we'd be doing, there'd still be a cost involved.
Okay, I was my, that's right, I was home, but I didn't know if the WIA charged or not.
I can't imagine any organization that requires us to do something offering it for free.
Touche.
We don't have any of this.
Dare you say that. Okay, is there any additional? Nope, sorry. Speak. Okay. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry. Okay, superintendent report, Mr. Smith.
We have had a lot going on. We had last week on Thursday night, I had the luxury of attending our first parent Spanish courses. As, or sorry, English courses, as we're working on our ways to begin enriching our relationships with our families. At our. On the 15th, on the 14th next week, we are bringing a law firm, Stevens Clay. They're doing a training for our administrative team. It's been a lot of confusion on student discipline and how we protect the learning environment of our students. So we're actually bringing in a law firm who specializes in student discipline. On making sure that we are maintaining the protection of our students, we're protecting the learning environment of our campus and kind of little legal practices around protecting that learning environment of our practices. On the 15th next week, we actually have our first our family partnership meeting for kindergarten readiness. So we're pretty excited about. Our partnership with Learning to Grow and our other learning providers on how we're beginning to work through how is it to be kindergarten ready and how we can support our families in our kindergarten readiness initiatives. And then Wednesday next week, the 16th, I'll actually be on my way to Spokane, but our master based learning team is coming in. They're going to be meeting with our teachers and administrators. That's actually where they're going to kind of take the first look at some of the board policies. And then we'll be getting bring in board policies starting on our next board meeting to begin reviewing. Kind of saying, these are some of the ways in which they would, you know, master based learning would impact what we're doing in our classrooms. So I mean, I think we have three days next week that are very busy. And then that leads into the WASDA conference, I know. For an hour now, India and Spokane for the WASDA conference Wednesday through Saturday. And then that'll take us toward next board meeting, which is on social emotional learning and I know I misspelled and Eric Smith will be presenting on our data dashboard. So I think we'll have a group, we'll have a, might be another long board meeting between the 2000 series reviews for master learning or our social emotional learning and our data dashboards. But we've got a lot going on and currently there's parent teacher conferences and my wife is over there now.
Yeah, thank you. Student representative report, Ms. Delaney.
Well, it's, I feel like it's been forever since I've been here. So first, I want to start off by saying, I hope everyone was eligible eligible to go vote, got out and voted before yesterday or did yesterday. Personally, that was a pretty big deal for me. I got to vote for the first time, which was really cool. I hope everyone was able to take part in that and share that right. And it's, I don't know, it's just a really cool thing to share your voice. Also, there's been a lot of successes recently that we've really been talking about a lot in the meeting. First of all, FFA Nationals, that was the first time I ever got to go personally. And it was the coolest thing seeing that many people in those blue jackets and just seeing that many people who care so much about our organization. It really, it was just really, really cool. And there was a bunch of success there. The agriculture communications team that I was a part of was a gold placing team. Poultry was a bronze placing team and that competition was insane. They were there for like eight hours and they did awesome. And Grace Smith for employment skills got silver. Crazy. That that woman amazes me. Next, girls soccer had their state sent off today. That was pretty awesome. I haven't seen, especially with COVID, the past couple of years, I haven't gotten to see many teams go to state. And so having my like friends and people that I know that are on that team, they're so excited to go and compete. And that's just, I think, a really big one for our community, especially beating Lonnie for district champs. That was awesome. Staying on sports, winter sports are kicking up. I'm excited to go out and watch all those, support everybody. And then I wanted to wrap up my report by wishing luck to all my fellow seniors who are prepping for and applying to colleges. It's a really big thing and it can be really scary, but I just encourage everybody and families and everyone to utilize your resources. A lot of the staff here know about scholarships and they know how to apply to things. I know I've been talking a lot with Mrs. Smith, my counselor at the high school, with questions I had about my applications. And she has been so incredibly helpful that I've been able to get into the college that I really wanted to get into. So really, yeah, just utilizing your resources and setting us up for a good second quarter.
Thank you. Congratulations on all of your experiences you had to have.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that concludes our regular meeting. We're going to go ahead and move into executive session.
Before we go, I just wanted to give a shout out to Grant Bessie and Trading Carter on also making it to state and boys golf. And then so they'll participate in the spring, so they have to keep their skills up and come back for the state competition in the spring.
How does that balance with baseball?
It's always a challenge.
It's a delicate balance.
The state is, do they do state for girls and boys golf?
Yes. Both in the spring.
Thank you for that, Ryan. Okay, so we'll convene for executive session for 15 minutes. There'll be no action taken.
We will come out, we'll run at 6:45 and we will come out at 7:00.
Yeah.